Oh, I'm sorry. So I just want to explain how the process would go tonight before we get started with the case. On the agenda that was published, there were two cases. We are only hearing the subdivision case tonight. We are not hearing the site inspection. The first thing I'm going to do is ask the completeness review committee to see our application completeness. And that committee just reviews the application to make sure all of the items in the checklist are, were either included or they are here tonight. After that, the board will look on whether the application should move forward. It's complete. I will find those to move forward based on the hearing. The next step would be the applicant and the representative will present the project. That's Marion here tonight with us. The board will then be able to ask questions and comments to the applicant and their representative. And then we will open up to the public for comments and questions and the butters. When, if you are here in person, please speak loudly and clearly. We are recording this session on the microphone and on Zoom. So we want everyone to be able to hear your question, state your name. If you have a butter, state your address or property and area of residence. Please address the board and not each other. So if you have a question, address it to the board. We don't want people talking, you know, we want the question to come to us so we can present. And respect everyone's time to speak. Inference will be tolerated, so please let everyone finish their question or comment. And then again, on Zoom, Jamie is monitoring Zoom. People may ask questions through Zoom. So we will have to sort of, every other one, if we get a lot of questions come down Zoom, Jamie will let me know, will read comments, and then we can reflect that comment. So just be patient, we'll get to everyone's comments. So if you're on Zoom and hearing, you need to raise your hand. You can hand raise function in Zoom. Or you can type in a comment or question in the comment box. And Jamie's going to be picking up all of that. Does anyone sound clear? Yeah. So we're, yeah. So at this point, I'm going to open the hearing for the subdivision application case. So that is case 20 SDO3, application for subdivision law line adjustment. From Ronald and Melissa Shadick. The property is located on Stevens Road, second half to a right south, and Woodward Hill Road, Hitz map three, lot 17, ten eighteen. A five lot subdivision and one lot line adjustment are proposed. At this point, the board from the accused's, um, that's.
Karen? Jerry can't hear. No, very muffled.
Jamie is the master of Zoom.
No, I'm not.
How's that, Jerry? Is that any better?
That's better. I think after you were speaking, Betsy said something, and that was completely muffled.
Yeah, she's on.
If you can thumbs up if you think you are better.
Muffled is what she's saying.
The planning board members will be sitting on this case.
Bernstein present. Okay. Yes. Did you have a question?
I did. So I'm David Jones, and my question is this. I am informed that you have been sent a letter from a by understanding of the parties. Questioning if it was called into this hearing and if they are retaining counsel to represent for this case.
Yeah.
Are you willing to address it?
Yes, I will. So the process will be after the applicant has a chance to present the case, then we will take those comments. Okay. Yeah. Okay. 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 I'm going to ask Sarah Pyle, who's the chair of the CRC, which stands for the Completeness Review Committee, to give us their report.
Did you put the?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I can do that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The application was received on nine, that's the one day that I didn't put this.
Fifteen.
The completeness review committee met on nine thirty and sent a list of deficiencies to the applicant on ten six. Certified notices were mailed to the applicant and all the butters on ten six. And was, it was noticed, public notice of illegitimate transkip published on ten eight. And as we all know, site inspection was held earlier today. The Finances Completeness Review Committee, which was sent to the applicant, found that the application was substantially complete. There are four outstanding items. I understand you have some of them with you tonight, John.
We have forwarded all, one, I believe, to Karen. If I'm wrong, please correct me.
The driveway letter.
The road agent letter and the fire department.
Yep. And.
Did you get those?
I got the road agent letter. But if you have the.
There's the notice of acceptance for our state subdivision approval. It's not approved, pending approval. So the disprove that we made application to them, and we're waiting to receive the subdivision approval number.
For the DES.
Yes.
I have not seen either the road agent or.
Yeah.
The fire department approvals.
Do you have the road agent letter with you?
I have the road agent letter with me. I did send you a copy of that.
Yeah.
And I also have a copy, well, this is my personal copy. I thought it happened to you. They not got a copy?
I have to send one along to the board by ten.
You didn't send it? Okay.
I sent a letter from your office.
Okay. So I have it.
Okay.
So you have a copy of it?
Yes.
Okay. And Larry reported a copy for the board to have, so we're here. Because I don't want to take your own copy, but you do need a copy.
I'm going to go with the copy.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, and state approvals, the, you said that we have the pending approval from the.
For the subdivision, for the, from the DES.
From the DES.
Yes.
And then I believe there's another question about a state approval, but we can get to that next. I just want to go through my checklist. There's also outstanding fees for this application of $606.95. Do you have that with you?
Yeah.
Okay. That'd be great. We love seeing money. And there was one, those are the deficiencies. I don't want to, let me just double check. Fire, road agent. And there's one waiver request. The, our application requirements list is B2 is the soils data and his maps. They're asking for a waiver for that with the statement, "We've not provided high intensity soil mapping as the lot areas are oversized and the proposed building areas are suitable for residential development. USDA soils have been shown on our plans and no development is proposed for areas in excess of 15% slopes."
Do you want to explain that waiver to everyone, what that means?
So high intensity soil survey would yield a more specific understanding of what the lot consists of. If you were on a lot that had speech slopes, curvable soils with non-curvable soils, and we just give you a better characteristic, if you have four lots, this mapping would prove that that lot is acceptable for residential development. In our case, we have great soils. We have failure of a building site. We don't have slopes over 15%. If done test, that's a lot. So I don't see where this mapping is meaning, where we far exceed the state's minimum requirement for sediment.
Yeah. I actually think that the his mapping in this case is unnecessary. So I would move that the board grant the waiver request for B2 soils data, his maps.
I would second that.
All in favor?
I. Any post?
Any post?
Is that unanimous?
I think that's unanimous.
Okay. So that being, the waiver being granted, and as soon as, did he get the check? That I wasn't paying. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
I, I'm going to move that we vote to accept the application as complete for the purposes of hearing, because I do think that there's still a question about an outstanding state permit that we're going to get to in the middle of the discussion. But, but for the purposes of hearing, I move that we, we accept the application as complete.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I. Any post?
Okay. At this point, we move, so that just means that the application they submitted has been submitted in complete form. At this point, we will move to the applicant to give a presentation of the project. Is that you, John? Yeah.
I am. Hello, everybody. My name is John Page. My brother is Virgil Land Services. We have tonight some things to discuss. Partridge, his map on land, so please forgive me. But we have here, we have two existing lots of record. We have lot three dash seventeen, which is along the drain line, coming back around the moon line. And we also have lot three dash eighteen right here, which is big, large, everything in the green. What we're looking to do is to do a lot line adjustment, first of all, to bring this lot line down so that we have one residential lot to develop here. Create a very large parcel in the middle, and then we create four lots along Stephen Grove. The lots are all excessive of the requirement of three acres. But they can save two, three one three, three four, three one five, three oh seven. And we have the gap for the last seat here. Down below, that's three point three acres. The white part in the middle is going to be twenty three point seven acres. The remainder parcel, which is where you saw the larger building. Going to jump to the last seat here on our site lot. We had blocked the five different residential lots to show where the proposed driveways would go. The first lot, they explained out here. The other four lot, sleeping throes, is obviously where we own them, is where I'm riding the rain. I think that they addressed a lot of questions in the field, but I know there's going to be several more. So first, if you could see if the board wants to take comments first, or if you would like to actually take comments yourself.
Yeah, the board will have questions or comments first.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
So that's my presentation in a nutshell. This is our.
Okay. My first question to you is the alteration of terrain permits required by the state. I have not measured what's been altered out there, but it's obviously, to my eyes, more than the minimum. And it's, it's, we have discussed this with council, and it's, and in this case, where the land has been cleared and stumped, and now you're turning it into subdivision, the permit, you know, the alteration of terrain permit comes into play. So I'm just wondering if you have any comments or?
I have no qualms. What is the consideration for the alteration of terrain for our acreage?
Ten thousand.
It's a hundred thousand square feet, which is about three, three hundred square. Three fifteen, yeah. It's a little bit under two acres. And it stands that there is a sort of ten year before and after period of, of the terrain being altered. Yeah. That's a big issue. I think we need to, you know, look into that more. Something that, as far as this application goes, it's, it's one of the major issues that we.
When I was president, did my services, we did property of the land.
Yeah.
We did a boundary survey, but I don't know when any of the services happened, or what the actual crudge of that is. So I can't consider not knowing with the backside.
And I think that's something that we need to consider.
Yeah.
So, and I'm, you know, I get that you need to go out and measure what the, what the altered terrain is, but the total square footage is the altered terrain.
Yeah.
But we just, I mean, it's, when I walked it, I was amazed at how much more alteration had been done than you could see from the street. So to me, it's well within the.
Yes. It's, I, I mean.
Well over.
It needs to be.
The required land is removed.
Correct. Correct. Yeah. Are there other comments?
On the alteration of terrain or?
Yeah. No.
No. I do actually have another comment. And I've been at preface by saying that I am an active member of the Franciscan Historical Society and have known for years about this neighborhood as far as the National Registry. And it's not just the neighborhood is on the National Registry. The specific land that you're proposing to subdivide is on the National Registry. It's part of the neighborhood. It's designated as the only national, and it is the only national registered historic district in Franciscan. And it's Old County Road right there. That the, I can show you the copy of the map, that the, your, your land that you're planning to subdivide is literally the corner of this historic district. So then that, to me, keeps in our zoning laws and the protections that it asks us as a board to consider when, when there's additional features to a land. Because I agree with John, that if it were just on the face of the land and the frontage and everything else, the, this is a very suitable parcel to be subdivided. But our ordinance dictates that there are other considerations that we have to take into effect. I would draw your attention to Article Five of the Franciscan zoning ordinance, which is open space development. The purpose of the open, and I'm reading from it. The purpose of the Open Space Development Ordinance is to, I'm skipping through for both the preservation of open space, farming and recreation areas, green space, built towards valuable wildlife habitat, habitat, and outstanding natural, cultural, and historic features. So to me, the whole purpose that we, the whole reason that we created the Open Space Development Ordinance, and it was passed by a large margin in the town of Franciscan, was just for this kind of protecting this kind of an area of land. Under the 5.4 actability and procedures of the open space development, a planning board may require an applicant to use an open space development subdivision design if the property possesses one of more or more of the following special features. And one of those features is unique, natural, cultural, and/or historic features, particularly those identified in the Franciscan Master Plan or other, as identified. The Franciscan Master Plan, you might ask. Under our, on page, under our land use section, under cultural and historic resources, one of Franciscan's defining features and valuable assets is its classical ruin architecture. While the style of architecture does not directly affect land use, the preservation of these resources is important to the community and should be considered in any land use planning decisions. Then it goes on to say that a complete survey of all structures, sites, and objects was done in 1991. Five areas were identified as warranting historic district protection. Main Street, which is just, most of the buildings here have just gone on the National Registry. Mill Village, Clark Village, which interestingly is, is just beyond the Woodward Hill side. That, that first house, as you go down Woodward Hill, is one of the few remaining schoolhouses in the town of Franciscan. And as you go further downward Hill, Clark Village is considered a big historic asset to the town. But specifically, the County Road South, Birdsall Road area is on the National Registry of Historic Places. So to me, that, that leaves us firmly in, in the territory of, we really must consider an open space development. Of the, of the five criteria I mentioned earlier, there's two other that we're kind of on the cusp of. It is the little bit, there's a little bit on Stevens Road, of the Stevens Road frontage that is actually on the edge. And there's some prime and state soils that are on, actually, it's on the Woodward Hill lot, the majority of it, but there's also a sort of a section, a little section of it right across from the Tolman property on Stevens Road. So it meets, or near meets, three of the five criteria in our ordinance. It says that we may, and I would argue, must consider an open space development model.
I haven't seen this, this information in, in, say, near meets. And I'm also looking at this map, which I have seen, which calls out the, the front part of roads and assuming Stevens.
That's Stevens Road now, yes. Roads by many names.
So where does this information come from? This is a cross reference.
It's, oh, sorry. It's, I need to give you the whole application. It's the.
National Register.
Historic Places inventory and.
Is it cross reference to your zoning?
Sorry?
Is it cross reference to your zoning?
That zoning.
No, because it's not, it's not a zoning, it's not a regulatory piece of paper. The regulatory piece of paper is our zoning ordinance, which refers to important cultural heritage and stuff that is recognized in the master plan. That's what our zoning says. And our master plan refers to it.
Okay. So we're saying near meets, but doesn't mean?
No, I'm saying it totally means criteria five, and near meets two other criteria. So, so to me, and I'm one member of the planning board, I believe we have good reason to, to ask you to, to create a plan that would meet the open space development model. And for people who don't know what this basically means, it used to be called cluster housing. It's where you, Franciscan has three acres zoning, minimum three acres, three hundred feet of frontage. When you do an open space development, it's just, there's a lot of things, pieces and parts of it that, that we need to look at. Generally, you can reduce the size of each individual lot. You can put one access way into the property, cluster the houses together, so that the land surrounding it is, is left, in fact, you might be able, if you do an open space development, you might be able to decrease the frontage that you have, that you're developing, to have more land to use for your riding arena. Because it's 15 acres is what you need for an open space development. And then within that, we all, we have flexibility as far as how we can create lots. All they need to do is support well and septic. There's no minimum frontage on the road, on the, the road that you create. And there's also the other thing, which I think is particularly beneficial, considering the sensitivity of the neighborhood, is that you, you're required to keep 100 feet forested buffer around the property. It would protect the tree line on the roads, protect the road quality of the road. Stevens Road is also identified as one of the very few non-designated scenic roads in town that is still a forested road or mostly forested road, which is another thing that we, as planners, have to consider important. So you have already, you've already proved by the plan that you showed tonight that you can get four lots on this land. But I would say, I think we should require you to do an open space to cluster those houses, so that more of the land, less of the land is impacted. There's also significant wetland on this land. I mean, not, not regulatory prohibitive, but significant.
In the overall picture, I mean, a wetland center on the lot, or, you know, towards the middle of the lot, outside of areas where proposing development, you know, there wouldn't be impact because of the large blockers already required by the town of 100 feet. And I have to believe that a block development would be more out of place in this area of residential development.
Not sure I get your point. Will you say that again?
When you're looking at something being out of place, where you're trying to preserve the historic nature of the neighborhood, I think that coming down the road, seeing a lot of houses in the middle versus seeing houses scattered along the road with purchases from requirements, I believe that those are more out of place than what we're proposing.
I don't agree with you, but, and, and the other thing is that the forested buffer aren't, it's a hundred foot buffer from the road, so.
Vegetated buffer.
Vegetated buffer. So, sorry, I didn't say forested.
It's okay. Forest is good.
Would, would better protect the scenic quality of the area of both of its neighborhoods, both the Clark Village, Woodward Hill Road area, and the Birdsall Old County Road area.
If what you're interested in is a vegetated buffer, would you be interested in seeing maybe a vegetated buffer proposed for the four lots along road? would you be interested in seeing maybe a vegetated buffer proposed for the four lots along the road?
I'm not sure that's the only thing. I think the open space development would cut down on the driveways. You could have, you know, two basic curb cuts there that fed all of the houses.
Or even one, if you could figure out how to call them exactly.
In and out.
In and out.
I just think that the way that you presented the site, you would impact so much more by trying to conserve these blocks from the public's viewpoint than you would his place of residential development for the lots. I'm just proposing this to you where I believe that you're looking at the significance of the buffer along the road, that, you know, if we were to place a prohibitive area on the plan of the 100 feet from the road and say there's no cut buffer on these lots, if that's something that would interest you. I just really feel the character of an open space lot would be far more prohibitive and far more out of place. But I'm speaking my own opinion, obviously.
Right. Yeah. Yeah.
I hear what you're saying, but I think with the amount of -- with the importance of this historic, vegetated buffer, when you have an open space development, your document, if you say, you have a document that says all of this at the exterior of this lot will be protected from --
Well, that's what I'm just saying.
So. But there isn't usually a neighborhood association of it. I just, you know, I disagree with you saying that the four lots, boom, 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 along the road, even with the vegetated buffer, you still have four driveways. You still have four front lawns.
Both cases, I have four driveways. It's just the entrances that are different. And then they need to be longer to achieve the end of the house.
You could also, if you did open space, you could accommodate the existing stone wall that is in there. You put two on one side, two on the other. You could make it in such a way that it's harmonious with the neighborhood, which to me is a more appropriate development.
I think it sounds far against you that it is achievable. Obviously, it would be designed, but, you know, once you impact all of these driveways coming out of the driveways, I think it would be very more intrusive. If you want to indicate that region, I'm just trying to achieve your common interest with something that I feel is the character of the neighborhood.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't agree with you.
Yeah.
I really think an open space development is the right -- the right model. John could probably address it.
Well, if they're asking us to propose a common open space subdivision, they're going to be asking for a road so that we can give access to these lots with the road becomes drainage, drainage improvements. It comes with more driveways coming off of that road that we had to design. So when you're talking about preserving the area as far as this goes, it doesn't fit it, I would ask. And then it would be a bunch of lots that are clustered together. So when you drive down the road, you don't see houses stacked apart. You see all these houses that are very close together and look out of place. It would look more like an old folks home than it would look like residential.
That's actually not necessarily true, John. There's no requirement that the houses be, you know, 10 feet apart. There's no dimensional requirement in an open space development. They can each have their own acre. The only thing you need to do is meet the setbacks and do the forested buffer. And the lots have to be large enough. Well, you can, there is a provision in our open space development that you could develop common wells and common septic, but I expect that to not work for you guys to have in mind.
No, I don't think that anyone who wants to buy a lot that has any restrictive restrictions and they think that they need the ordinance throughout the law. I think that we're proposing this, you know, very tasteful, you know, as far as lots with their locations, of house spacing, and the driveways. And they're preserving a large chunk of the land already.
How are they preserving a large chunk of the land?
They're keeping 27 acres in the middle. That's their lot.
That's not even.
That's not preserving it, though. That's just having a large tract of land that you have a riding arena and --
Nothing.
And you'd say possible a house on it.
Well, that's totally used and independent of, yeah, in the future ones.
When I hear preserving land, I hear preserving the land, not having a large lot and do a bunch of stuff. The lot that you're currently suggesting to be subdivided was, yeah, all of Francis Town was open land at one point, so.
Yeah.
The board --
No, but we're not, we're --
The public portion of this is after -- sorry, but the board has its time to speak and ask questions, and then we ask for public input. Sorry.
Yeah.
Couldn't somebody else weigh in on whether, I mean, I'm on your --
Yes.
Yeah, no. So open space, I mean, everybody sort of makes the assumption that open space developments are cluster housing and they're all together in this little area. They do not have to be that.
Right.
They can be designed very attractively and they can design, redesign, or whatever, that they're sort of spaced and set so that each lot has their own private little feeling area. It's not like you have to have an old people's home, such and such and such. They can be created with them. There's lots of good designs that they have presented.
We're looking at the northwest corner of this property. And the only change would be two less driveways and the houses closer together.
So I think.
And a vegetated buffer and the houses closest together, closer together, which actually, considering the sensitivity of the land, the sensitivity of the neighborhood, the soils in the area, the wetland on Stevens, I mean, the approach area on Stevens Road, all of that, the impact of the land would be far less. And the visual, as well as the impact on the conservation elements of this land is far less if you shrink the areas. We're not asking for less houses in this OSB. We're saying that the same amount of houses can go on, can utilize a lot less of the land and protect the view sheds, protect the historic character of the neighborhood.
I mean, it's also been very tasteful with the amount of lots we're using, too. I mean, from an open space standpoint, due to capital agents, we'd be able to achieve far more lots.
I'm not sure far more lots.
I don't. Given the wetlands, okay.
I'd be more, I'd be far more.
No, no. I don't, A, I don't think that's true, given our density bonuses and the wetlands and the other constraints of the lot. But you might be able to get five lots if you're looking at it with your density bonuses. If you're willing to open it, light it up to the public, it would be great.
Yeah.
So read the OSB, and I think you'll find there's enough flexibility in this to create a development model that would be very appropriate for the neighborhood.
So you're asking for a road, common driveway?
You need to design it, I think. This is the thing. We can sit here and speculate.
And it's not what you want to see.
Well, it's all written out in the open space development regs, right?
Well, I need that in my theoryism, if you have.
I'm never honest. I mean, I'm not going to guarantee I'm happy with the new OSB, but we may have suggestions, both suggestions. I will tell you that when I was sort of playing with it, there's a natural thing where you could do a horseshoe dirt road in there that could easily have four houses, maybe five houses off. Still maintain 100-foot vegetated buffer and keep your wetland setbacks. And I think there's plenty of land that each of those houses built private.
I think with the road, you know, that comes from each thing comes, you know, jet detention basins, all kinds of things.
Our road requirements for an open space development are significantly less than our -- not significant, are less than our road, major road requirements.
Yeah.
It's a dirt road in there would be, to me, preferable than doing any kind of.
Any cost of it as well.
I.
I think this is all speculation. Like, we, this option hasn't been explored. It's something that, given the site, given the historic district, given all of the other features, it's something that the town would like to explore. This is why we wrote the open space development regs. For this very, very reason.
I haven't had a chance to discuss your earlier comments as far as, you know, the historic nature of the master plan. That handled, you know, gave me as far as, you know, historic features would ever cross reference anywhere that the regulations are going. So, I mean, it's nice to see, but, you know, would have been nice if it was pointed out, hoping the regulations could set me care of. And then, you know, as far as proposing an open space development, I really feel it's got to be out of place if that's what you want to see. And you won't be able to use these characters as far as taking the open space development, creating a design, certainly do that. I believe it's going to be very profitable given the client, and I really think that this layout is wonderful. I don't see why it's not.
Yes, Betsy.
I just wanted to make a comment that in addition to how you lay out, you know, put them close together, there has to be step aside land. There's a minimum of 50% of the rest step aside from an effective open space. So part of the land has to be step aside.
So your big goal is to have the land reserved?
No, it's not conservative. It's step aside open space.
It's just step aside.
But the step aside could actually be the wetland area. The, there's, in, on this existing lot, it can't be.
About 50% of the open space land may consist of wetlands, surface waters, floodlands, or areas without, unaccounted, holes, wherein 25%.
So if you're looking at your plan, the wetland that's there and with the landlocked, buildable acreage behind it would satisfy the open space requirement, the step aside requirement, as well as the 100-foot buffer on the frontage or on the entire exterior of the open space development parcel. And then the other thing is you're talking about a 15-acre tract of land. So you could actually move the lot line of the closest to the arena lot farther downward Hill, bring the lots back to the wetlands, square that off, which then also meets our goal of not having weird angles in developed lots. Square the lot off and have a big fence, square there a 15-acre piece with four houses on a little U. It would be so great, John.
I'm trying not to, you know, go past that, but.
Because you're not trying to be, I'm not suggesting building the wetlands. I'm saying that you could incorporate your weapons into the open space development tract, 15-acre tract. Right now, you have 12 acres, four times 13 acres.
So if I were to go with the open space calculating, I can get, let's just say, a basic lot and I have to preserve this tract that's 50%. I can take my exact same layout and take that piece of property that's down below my lots, call that open space, and this will be the format.
No, that's not at all. No, that's not at all. We would never accept that. That is not in the spirit of the open space regs. And it sounds like you haven't read them, so.
No, I --
I mean, we can guess all.
And I wouldn't be too biased here. I mean, as far as, you know, you can do it both ways. All you're doing is just making the acreage smaller on the lot.
That's not all we're doing.
Right. I think you're missing.
I don't agree with you on that, Steve.
Yeah. No.
So, and I think that this is something that, you know, our open space development was included for to protect certain valuable community assets. And this land falls totally within the definitions that the town built it to fit. So to me, we have to, we have to at least consider this development, to me.
And I'm also just arguing with you on some, not taking it personal, but I'm just looking at it from a standpoint of development, how financially unfeasible it would be to have to design it over through and cluster and take the move that you're taking. And I just wanted to bring those topics up.
Yeah, I get that.
The last question was sort of have the terms of the term is, the terms is that we slated to ask.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We need to look at that. So the alteration of terrain regulations to state regulation says the amount of contiguous area disturbed shall include any terrain disturbance that occurred on the same property as the proposed project within the 10 years before commencement of any terrain alteration. So that needs to be looked at, that alteration of terrain.
We're not going to have an assist state permit during the year. And if you're near, which permit is required, and I'd be interested in the question.
Well, we never know which permits are going to be required. This is, okay, well.
The thing is, until, I'm honestly, until we had the land and saw the land, we didn't realize how much land had been disturbed. So that's part of the process, the difficulty of the process. You didn't mention on any of your plans, and I think you said you had an onsite in the thing that was included in your site plan application had to happen, as is the issue, but yeah, nowhere in there is a talk about any disturbed land. And that's, I mean, that's, it's a significant portion of this land has been.
Recently.
Recently disturbed. We're walking in, you know, newly stripped land. So to me, that's.
I mean, as, I mean, I would expect as the engineers that you are, that would be something that would occur to you, that the AOT.
From last year.
Okay, well, this, if it.
Again.
You've got to, yeah.
We're just trying to follow rules and guidelines that we have in the materials we put up.
Yeah. I mean, it was there, right? So that is definitely something that, you know, needs to be addressed. The AOT permit and the regulations. And I think it's, yeah.
And it actually, if you would look into it, and then I think maybe we should look into it from the, from the, it's in one of the town centers, too.
Yes.
And then we can compare notes during the process. I don't want to leave you out. They say you do all the, you do all the work.
Right.
But we can have an offline note comparing, but then address it at a continuation of this hearing because we obviously got some homework to do.
Yes. Correct. Yes, Betsy.
I just have a question. Obviously, this topsoil has been stretched from where we walked. What has happened to that topsoil?
I can't answer that question.
It's been screened. All stayed on the second screen. Yeah, we took oil. We used a lot of the tailings on the backside to, around the little operator to build that out, so, yeah, up the screen.
So it's screened and it's still on site?
Every, every, I don't know, my nose, and I can't have the eyes. I need more than that. So everything stayed on site.
Can you answer any of your opinions if you're intending open for the public?
Yeah. Are there any more opinions from the board, questions? Actually, Betsy, did the Conservation Commission have?
We haven't yet.
Yeah.
So obviously, this is the first time that we've walked it.
Yeah.
Do you would like to go back and walk the wetlands?
Okay.
I tend to use for asking more clear voices.
Okay.
It's hard with the motion.
So Betsy represents the Conservation Commission. They would like to walk the wetlands. They haven't met as a commission since the application, since we reviewed the application.
So our meeting is November 2nd, I think, first Monday of November.
Okay.
So we'll discuss it.
So you have a chance to walk it before that meeting, but that's great.
Okay. Do you have another comment, Betsy? No. Okay. We'll take comments from the public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Looking at, looking at the map that was handed out.
Hang on.
Sorry, there's another question from the board.
Looking at the map that was handed out, I can't quite see that. But what was parcel A that is, is a lot on adjustment, he had to the large landscape.
Yeah.
A parcel A, so.
Oh, parcel A, it's a lot by itself, but it had the brick frontage. But you don't have frontage on Francis Town, Frank's side, because you don't have enough frontage on Stevens Road, so what's the basketball, if you're doing it?
Then it has to be-
If you have a basketball, it can't work.
Our zoning requires your frontage to be satisfied on a single road, and because this is that less than 300 feet on each of two roads, it doesn't actually qualify as a lot.
Okay, that was a question. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
Linda's got her hand up, so it's busy.
Yeah, okay.
I think this has been-
Yeah, let's take this question back in the-
I'm wondering, could you-
Could you, I'm sorry, could you state your name and-
Busy Tollman, 142 Stevens Road.
Thank you.
Where else in town do we have cluster housing or open space housing?
The mountain, the condominiums, I believe, are considered a cluster housing, aren't they?
I don't know, that was so long ago.
Yeah. You see, there's been such little development in Francis Town since we passed the open space development ordinance, that we haven't, we've only looked at it, in my recollection, for one other piece.
So you're really just playing with the idea?
No, that's not true at all. There was a proposal that was put forward by the Weederhols for an open space development across the street from their house on Main Street. They, we were very, you know, it was a great development, and I think it would have gone sailing through, and then they withdrew it, because they decided they weren't interested in, in selling the property at that point. It was a family decision, but-
But there is no existing-
There is, no, we can't point to another place in Francis Town where you can go see an existing open space development.
That was approved under the open space.
And with the open space and the open space development, who, is it open to the public?
It, it can be, one of the, one of the, you have to, you shouldn't, you should, I would encourage you to read the zoning ordinance, Article 5.
I'm asking you.
Yeah, no, but I, there's, there's some intricacies of the ordinance. One of the things that you can do in an open space development, and I haven't read it in probably two weeks, so don't, is that you can open your common areas to public use, and there, and that may buy you, depending on all other factors of the development, and John will look at it, that may buy you an extra, an extra lot, but it's, it's, there's a lot of math involved, huh?
It does have, no.
You don't have to.
Okay.
No.
So if they were planning to develop it at all, then this land disturbance would be fine?
No.
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 Well, if they didn't come before you-
No.
For some of this-
So, the alteration of terrain permit, there are exemptions. One is timber harvesting, one is normal agricultural activity, like fields, are exempt. Any development that is commercial or residential requires an alteration of terrain permit. There are other kinds of laws too, but in this case, that's where it lies.
Yeah.
So the field, so the field down below, where the horses are going to be, that's okay because agricultural?
It's normal, it's not part of residential development.
Or commercial, this would come up-
However, the minute you, the minute you propose non-agricultural use on any part of that land, then it becomes part of this alteration term, which you don't.
Yeah.
So if we never put a house on that piece of property, then it's not an issue?
If you never ask to subdivide the lands, the subdivision is exactly what to reverse, because it's considered development, whether or not you want a house on it.
Yeah.
It's the development, it's-
Right. The, the regulation is written to prevent people from clearing and moving dirt on a property, claiming exemption, and then turning around and building a commercial or subdividing the property right away. So it's, it's trying to prevent that exact thing.
And, yeah, and the purpose of it is to protect surface water quality.
Yeah, it's, it's a drainage and surface water issue.
Managing drainage, recharging stormwater around park development activities.
Right. And it's a very typical permit that, that is required through the state. Anytime you move any more than, there are two categories, 50 or 100,000 square feet, it depends on the permit, but that's, it's, you know.
What are, what are the definitions of land alteration again?
Stump, disturbance of soil.
Yeah.
That's pretty much it.
I mean, stumping, stripping, stuffs, topsoil, any of that, yep.
So in essence, when you're trying to make something look nicer, you're being very bad with the money.
Well, I'm not sure I can answer that one, but it, it, you do, you need to file a permit is the issue. It's not like what it's looking like. It's you need to file a permit with the state if you're going to move that kind of dirt around. That's, that's-
If you're just going to sell the lot.
Well-
If you're just a landowner and you want to make it look nice, it's fine.
No, if you're just a landowner and you want to do something for agricultural purposes, there are, there is an exemption. If, if you want to create a field-
Normal, right.
There is an exemption. It, once, but however, if you are going to develop land, an alteration, and it's land you have done in excess of the rules of alteration, of the alteration term-
Within 10 years.
Within 10 years, then we have an issue.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So if they put a beautiful field in, in 10 years, or 11 years from now, they wanted to subdivide, there'd be a whole different thing. We'd ask you to do a lovely little cluster in the field, sorry.
For the record, I would much prefer to see subdivision as it stands than a bunch of, I agree absolutely with what John says, that having a bunch of houses clustered together, I'm going to find way more.
Okay. Let's let some other folks, oh yeah, Linda.
I was wondering, I have other questions to please hold on to themselves. So one of the questions I had is what we're, I thought I did you guys talk, you were 15 acres, when you were talking about potential open space areas, you, I thought I heard you were 15 acres, but I thought we were talking about, and 23 acres combined, because we're already talking first about doing a lot line adjustment prior to doing subdivision?
We're just throwing that one out, what we're speaking to was an open space development. We don't want to see this subdivision waste, we want to see it to be-
Wait, 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 you're entering a lot, but I obviously asked my question directly. I didn't-
I didn't try and, I didn't understand. I think what Linda, the, what I was saying with the 15 acres is our ordinance says that open space development is a minimum of 15 acres.
So because what I see, when I look at the proposal, is two things are happening, right? One is a lot line adjustment, which will then take some of, take a hatch for our parcel A and create a larger, the first thing that will happen is lot 318 will become larger.
Yes.
The second thing that will happen is that lot 318 will then be subdivided into five new lots, correct?
Four new lots.
Four new-
Five new lots. We will take, my understanding, let me run to it for you again.
Yeah.
Right now, we have lot 318 with a certain acreage, you don't have 100 acres, it's a certain acreage. Holes, I understand if you have them, is that lot 318 will increase, the first thing that will happen is 318 will increase in acreage, correct, with the lot line adjustment?
Correct.
The next thing that will happen is lot 318 will then, the original lot 318 will reduce in acreage, because we will then create lot 318-1, lot 318-2, lot 318-3, lot 318-4, correct?
That's correct.
What I'm saying, what my concern is, that that remainder, original 318 lot, which is now changed from the first thing that happened, which was the lot line adjustment, will then retain 789 feet of frontage on Stevens Road and contain 23.75 acre, 19.9 acres, will then retain 789 feet of frontage on Stevens Road with the remainder, 19.9 acres, of which, oh no, that's, that's no longer, it will retain 23.75 acres, 19.9 of which will be buildable, which will then leave an opportunity to then have three new lots, two with 300 foot of frontage and three, that three acres, a little more, a little more, plus 50 foot actually made into a new backlot, which people are making, making it more possible to be, well, so they, I'm concerned, while at the moment, we're talking about five lots, if that goes forward, that remainder 318 has a possibility of being further subdivided again, and we're not talking about that while yet, this should be the right time to consider that possible future, then when you're looking at your open space development.
I hear what you're saying. I don't see the 318 amount of land in the back, and you could ever have a backlot lot, I just don't see that.
It's just possible.
And, and two, there, there could possibly be a two-lot subdivision on the Stevens Road front edge, I think, in the future?
No.
No?
You, you know, because, once you apply the backlot, you have to have 300 feet of setback from the center of the road, so the existing building that's there is within the 300 feet, so, once you actually are online from the setback, you have to, you collect it, you don't have 318 acres, unless it makes a group, odd shaped lot, which will be something more. No, the issue is, that's kind of what I'm trying to get at, and maybe enhance
the preparedness, so, if you combine those lots, then parcel, if, if, I don't know what you're talking, there's not 300 feet on the turnpike or on Stevens Road, when they should combine those lots, then you will have at least an opportunity to put a house on the area that they have, so you might, first, thank you, whether you come up, you know, might have, might have gained something, am I wrong?
The backlot eventually, you have 300 feet of the road.
Okay, but I'm talking about that, that parcel A, confusing that option, on just a lot.
We are really confused on the first of all, you guys are going to get confused by your question, but the remaining parcel, you take the turnpike, it's not enough frontage for it to be considered by itself, you take the frontage for Stevens Road, and you apply it to even, 300 feet is required, it's not enough lots there, so you, you know, if you were trying to get a backlot on that, you have to have 10 acres of land, and if you want to get 10 acres of land, figure eight, it's not allowed, which you can have a lot. We've already over this.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, also, it's here, I've got a lot that's facing, I signed it, it's, possibly they're trying to do some work on, but anyway, the problem that we have on our piece of property is that there is a seasonal work that runs on the, on the, on the lot, basically the lot line, and with the amount of treatment that they've done, and also the amount of stripping that they've done on the land, okay, because it's been a very dry season, we have not seen an increase in the amount of water that comes down that slope into that work that runs into a driveway that basically goes through two culverts that, under normal conditions, the amount of rain that you normally get in the season of drought, the culverts get to somewhere between 80 and 90% full, okay? With the land that they have done to date and what they have done today, I'm referring to them taking a culvert out, okay? And I will have no access to give it to our house, how is this going to mitigate it?
Okay.
I was concerned.
If you're asking me, do you have to take a look at anything on the AOT threshold? If that's something that they do, it's not a thing, so we're going to increase the volume off the other property. So do we take a look at it and see how the water is being treated or it's totally, and if no increase would be proposed?
Well, there's, there's going to be a tremendous amount of water in this area.
No, same amount of water, it's the same theory, it's just how that water is treated. So if it is diverted and then treated, then it kind of attention base, part of the O2 is to look at the drainage on a lot, I'll say, where it goes, what it does, and you want to put in these 60-foot property, so, if we had to take that group, then obviously we'd have that. We are really psyched there right now. There's going to be a new agenda that's coming in for a site that's going to have location next month. We get to answer any questions that you have, regardless of the drainage, because that's a second thing. My phrase might actually be, maybe not as acceptable as the one tonight, but I'm sure that you'll ask the same questions next month, if you have other answers.
I just want to make sure that I don't have to refresh my, I have to be the culvert, and I don't have to, absolutely no, that goes on my progress. When you look back there, I mean, look, okay.
Yes, in the red sweater, yep.
I'm Heidi Gago, and I'm with the line, you're with the road, in chat. Is it all right if I move up to this?
Yes, certainly.
I have a few things to say, that's all right with the board.
Absolutely.
Our country and New England, and even Francis Town, are really running on two ruling themes, two ruling forces, change and mobility, and those are very exciting, very exciting, and they've been rejuvenated in many ways. But for balance, we also have, especially in New England, and certainly in our town, a respect for tradition. There's all kinds of tradition in this town that really matter, letting me see all the we live, and they are, for instance, a respect for the institution that we have in this town that are just multi-charged in town and in cities. We have an institution for government, we have schools, we have libraries, we have churches, and those institutions embody another kind of tradition from which there is great respect, and that's cultural tradition. After all, all those institutions, they're in houses, they live in buildings, that have been built according to a certain simple style of architecture that is recognizable throughout New England, and it's, it's beautiful, and that style is pervasive throughout the town, and actually, if you look at that, we have to admire those people who have moved to town and have had to build their own houses, and made great effort to build in the architectural style that would suit a town of this sort, where tradition counts so much. There's also embodied in those institutions, a different kind of cultural respect, and that is, after all, for learning and reading and knowledge, they all require that of us, and, and that matters a great deal. There's also in this town, a strong tradition of respect for neighbors. We care about our neighbors, we know our neighbors, we are aware of them, very often, if we're lucky, they become our friends, but that is not necessary, what's necessary is that we're aware of them, we're aware of their needs, and aware of their schedules, and it makes a huge difference. And it makes a huge difference. We are aware of anything we might do to disturb them and the terrible noises that might disturb them. We try not to do that. And that is such an important part of life in this town. And finally, we have a strong tradition of respect for, I might even say a reverence for nature. We care about what nature has given New England. Two great gifts are woods and, except for inland Vermont, every kind of body of water. And we are very conscious of taking care of nature, taking care of those woods, taking care of those bodies of water. And we're aware of how much we need them. And we also make sure that we make a great effort to balance the needs of lawyers and the county forest management that has to go on. So, those are the efforts. And the need to take care of ours and preserve them. So, I would have to say that when I first walked Stevens Road, and it was no longer a lush purple woodland road, but a stretch of land with dirt piles. And I heard that there were logs that were thrown into that roof back there. It was disgusting to say the very least. But I really have a lot to care about in this town, a lot to care about what we care about. Betty?
Thank you. Yes, Anne? Could you just say your name and hold up your closer.
Most of the voice. I was anticipating there is feelings and thoughts that I have had of the video and the word. And a few words. Francis Town took the guards upon us. When we first made our way down Stevens Road, I felt a secret like a brick in the ground. A pro that for a whole time, something magical and perjured, something that the people here, though I haven't even met them, cherish, respected and honored. The big tree, the old quiet spaces, the rustle of leaves before a storm, sharing in silence and peace and quiet that moved around us and shared in our tranquility. Someone, somewhere, there was a force holding back the explosion that has taken root across this planet, pushed back on sacred sense of and made for beauty. The voice that proclaims development and commerce reigns. The various and other voices are still small voices that speak to every heart here, that this place is sanctuary from the dehumanizing forces that separate and disregard the power of nature's meaning. This is a community of connected people that want to preserve this natural beauty that so surrounds us, nurtures our souls. It bears greatness in the testimony of collective influence that we must take careful account now, not only of the letter of the law, but the generosity of the spirit of the law. Those reasons why I have, and also the feeling behind, a right to be a point that to me always figured by Frank, his father, many years ago, he was a doctrine poet. And he taught us there's no distinguishing between the letter of the law, spiritual law, and art, medicine, and beauty. And this is how it goes. It reminds me of Francis Town, you know, the trees. It's called "Ains". The trees have quit their autumn bands, these banners of the holy tracts, blocking its summer soil, waiting, waiting to see the snow, all their song being let down. Know their joy and know their wrath, the laws will rule their lack. Patient against the resistance of the snow, lonely against the noise of the one. Lighting the street with lightning and heat, waiting for dawn to come and sadness to end.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question, comment?
This is Greg. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I just like to speak real quickly. I volunteered for a large group of local residents who had concerns about this project. We have a group of over 30 people that have been in touch with me that have concerns. We were, we have submitted as a group a petition to request a continuance of this because there was enough concern that we were prepared to get legal counsel to help us discuss this fully. I've kind of gotten the sense that some of our legal concerns, such as the alteration of terrain, such as the wetlands effects, such as the historic district impact, have been discussed here tonight. But I hope the board will, before they make any decision tonight to move forward with any kind of decision tonight, will consider our request for a continuance. We actually tried to have legal counsel help us tonight, but we just became aware of this agenda item last week. We have obtained counsel, we believe, but they could not be here tonight. So, I hope the board, if they're not already considering a continuance of this proposal, will consider our request that we discuss this further when we have legal counsel available to help us.
Okay, thank you.
And to answer Greg a little bit, I think this between the alteration of terrain and consideration of an open space model, I think that we are going to be continuing the hearing, or I'm going to move that we continue the hearing, we have to do that. Because I think we have some significant answers to get before we can go forward. Jamie, did we record tonight's meeting?
Yes.
So, Greg, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. This meeting has been recorded. So, if in fact your council would like to see what's already been covered, they probably can contact you head to head to find out how to do the meeting.
It'll be on the website tomorrow, the link to the recording.
Great. Thank you.
I'm going to second Sarah's motion for continuance.
Okay.
I have one question. Would you want to answer the question?
Oh, good question.
Greg?
I'm here. I kind of hear you.
Yeah, so Brad, this is Brad Powell, where you asked for a continuance. And my question, you, how soon can your council be available?
I couldn't totally catch that, Brad?
How soon can your council be available?
As soon as next week, potentially. We have not signed an agreement with them. They just were away this week and otherwise involved. I assume the continuance would be until next month, is that correct? That would give us time to get counsel up to speed and...
Yeah, I think, I know that we talked to the Shaddocks about continuing their site plan application. Then the next first Tuesday is actually voting day. So, that's not going to work. We're not going to hold a planning board hearing on voting night.
So, it's more important.
Yeah. Everyone will be emotionally drained. So, the next hearing is the 17th? The next, sorry, planning board date, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, that would be the next planning board date, November 17th. Yes.
I also ask, if you can put in confirmation, you can.
Yes. And we'll give the con con, the opportunity to review.
Add that to my motion.
Yes.
So, most of you have not extended this meeting. At the next meeting, will you provide an opportunity for public talk?
You can comment right now.
I kind of said it for time's sake.
Oh, yeah, it'll be a hearing.
Sorry, I thought we'd seen over here, but we would like to comment now. It might be helpful to the applicant to hear everything that you wanted to say.
Okay. So, we talked about the open space. I'd love to hear how the public felt about that, because I don't think you want to push it through. All in mind, I feel very close. I'm torn, I'm not sure that I'm convinced at all. So, but I'd like to give the public.
Well, one person's opinion. So, as since discussed, we have not really seen an application for a significant subdivision, probably decades, other than what's happening in the preparation of the three homes. It's here, foremost here. So, Francis Town has maintained its rural integrity and has continued for very good. I would say that this application is a classic example of what we don't want. It sets a terrible precedent. I don't understand why someone who would destroy a landscape that probably drew down here in the first place. I mean, that was in Christine Road, and we see what's happened. I don't, I just, you know, in reality, I don't get it. What's going to be happening potentially in the future, a good chance, is that with climate change we're experiencing internationally and nationally, this area has been identified as a safe zone. It's got good water, it's got good climate. And I can see in the years to come, a tremendous amount of pressure to develop. And if we start setting precedent in that by allowing these kinds of subdivisions, I think you are going to find it very difficult to deny further applications on even a grander scale. So, I just, I'm thoroughly opposed to this proposal. You guys are the defenders against ill-conceived and potentially damaging development. And we will look to you to keep the integrity of this thing. I could go on, but that's it in a nutshell.
Jamie, may I ask you a quick question? When you say that you're opposed to this type of development, are you opposing the conventional development you're showing here?
It's a question of scale. Yeah, it's a question of scale. This is altering, this is the end one of the primary and approach of the town. It changes the character and the culture. We all drive out of Francis Town on our way to bigger communities. We see what this kind of district development looks like and what how it changes the culture of that community when you drive out of lot after lot after lot, small acre properties, with houses setback, everything on the minimum. It's a suburb, it's not a rural town. And this is what we're creating.
I see.
Yes.
We have, before we feel strongly about this, we have an application in front of us, but it's not to be decided just by a vote of the members who's in the audience. There are rules to follow, there's regulations to follow. There's room to argue within the regulations, but, and at least the way I view it, it's not, it's up to us to preserve what we can preserve if we're allowed to within a regulation. But by the same token, if people come forward with a subdivision plan that meets a letter and spirit of the law, it will be our job to approve it. We're not here to stop all development. I don't think we have to argue. So, I think honestly, in my own point of view, I don't think, first of all, effective is all that effective. If people have arguments they wish to make that are in support or against this particular plan, especially as they pretend that what the subdivision regulations and zoning regulations are, I think that's helpful. I mean, I'm not opposed to.
I like the reply.
Excuse me, well, I'm asking. I'm just saying in general, and I see that that's the planning board's obligation is under the law. And so, I do think personally, I'd be the favorite to the continuance just so we hear all that we need to hear more regular decision. I don't say personally, I have decided. I don't know how I'm going to vote on this. I think we're trying to think of a way.
Can I respond because I was invited to at speed?
Certainly.
Okay. Brad, with all due respect, and I respect exactly what you're saying, I was invited by all members to eat my piece and give my opinion in that open space. That's what I did. So, you know, obviously, I feel strongly about this, I voiced my opinion. Obviously, the decision rests with the board by I making my claim.
Okay, yes.
I'm on Jamie, there's a question. I'm kind of with Sad, but you have a propelling question. I just want to first walk that out of it. I appreciate everyone's comments and honesty here and feel like they're feeling along the state and as well as the board taking into account the proposed subdivision. We're very concerned about it, the reasons everyone's talking about it. It would radically alter the terrain and existing natural features of a more than 500 acre whole category of South District, historic district, as you pointed out. That is registered in the National Register of Historic Places. Subdivision would strongly impact Major Rivers and sort of not only Francis Town, but it's a historic district. And if I'm looking at this further, I've learned that the subdivision would stand against the goals of the master plan, which include goals such as reducing presidential squall in development, goals that include preservation of natural resources with less than three miles. But that's what I refer to. And it basically would continue to negatively impact the harmonious character of the area and would change, radically change this rural small town nature, which is what everyone is saying. In addition, the subdivision would remove substantial open green space, even though it's been reduced to, without trees for the most part. But more importantly, it affects Francis Townland trust land as well as the S P N H F forest easements. So, I wanted to just sort of outline that in the sense that everyone seems to be on the same page. We're all concerned about the history of Francis Town. And I want to also mention support of the comment here that this is especially concerning because it represents a possible precedent in terms of Francis Town open land, because there's plenty of open land here to develop. And this is developed at a point, and in terms of our consciousness, our consciousness about this, and in terms of the letter of the law, not just the spirit of the law. So, thank you. I just wanted to. So thank you, I just wanted to express.
Okay, if there are any further comments, we have a motion on the table. Sorry, do I repeat here?
What did I say before? Motion to continue the hearing until November 17th at 6:30 PM. We have, either piece of business, we've not accepted the site development application, site plan development application is complete yet. Do you have the list of deficiencies? I don't think that's changed. Do you want us to take any further action on that tonight? You're asking us to continue? Okay, just wanted to be sure.
Yep, no. Yeah, we're not going to hear that one.
So we don't need to continue it? We never opened it, so we don't need to continue it? We should continue it?
I don't want to reopen it.
We did not.
Open it so we can continue it?
Well, I'm thinking maybe we should open it so we legally can continue it, because otherwise we have to renotice it. And there are two, which also brings up two things, that we noticed both of these applications at the same time. Fees for what Melissa paid us tonight is for the subdivision application. There are additional fees for the site development application, which as I looked at, kind of say, I thought I saw 200 bucks, there may be an additional thing because there's outside stuff, but 200 bucks is about right. And I was going to suggest to the board, because the board can do this, that we waive the notice fees, which are usually charged per application because we noticed this on both of the applications, if that's okay when I, when the CRC, we'll hold a second CRC meeting as soon as we get all of your material. So if you let me know, then I'll give you another list. So if you let me know in time and fashion when I can expect stuff, I can get the CRC committee ready to go.
We have a plan, I need to set. I'll check, we have a plan that I need to set, I'll check out the status.
Okay.
We could have brought it tonight with just a few deficiencies, that's another person not be complaining, to us, there's no point. We also thought it would be fair for the board to be able to see the plan prior to the meeting to be able to comment.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, we'd like to continue the meeting. We'll get to three as soon as we can.
That'd be great, and then we'll get out to board members, when we get the plans, we'll send them out to board members, so they have a chance to review it before.
Yeah.
Public hearing, that'd be great.
Okay, yes, Jerry.
Oh, Sarah, can you restate your motion? Is it still on the table?
We're still building it, Jerry.
Okay.
So now, can I, I couldn't move to accept the application for purposes of continuing the hearing.
I guess we should close the first.
Yeah, exactly. I'm trying to figure out how to do this.
Okay, let's close.
We're not closing, we're not closing the public hearing, we're continuing.
No, 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 no.
We need to close the subdivision. No, we're not closing the subdivision, we can close the public portion of the meeting.
Yes.
For now, but we may want to hear from the public next time. I wouldn't either.
Take a vote on it, take a vote in continuation.
Okay.
Take a vote.
Yeah, right, I think we need to.
We just need to vote in the continuation.
Of the site development. All right, I will move that we continue the site development portion of this meeting until November 17th.
Subdivision.
Subdivision.
Subdivision, thank you. Portion of the case.
Betsy, seconds.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay.
So then.
Let's open the site plan application hearing.
Yes. And the completed review report is that we do not recommend at this point, we're still waiting for a bunch of material, so we do not recommend the board accept the application's complete. However, we do recommend that the board continue, can we continue or not, continue this public hearing on the site plan review until November 17th?
I'll second that.
Second from Jerry Bernstein. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brad? Okay.
So both cases are continued.
Both cases are continued.
And John will let me know when I do, when you, when you think you'll have, it doesn't have to be every single piece, but we want to start going through it with the CRC, the most of what you can have, and give it everything you got, and then let's get to CRC, see if we can get going.
Okay.
John's good one.
All right, let me go.
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah.
We haven't planned any.
No.